Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the East Bridgewater Planning Board for Monday, September 16th, 2024. We have present with us tonight our regular members Diane Phillips, Rachel Tedesco, Vice Chairman Roy Gardner, Miles Heager, Dwayne Crosby, our Associate Member Yvonne McCray, myself, Chairman Kevin Riley. First order of business tonight is for the consideration of minutes for the last meeting, August 19th. Assuming that members have had an opportunity to go over those and that there are no questions or edits that want to be made, Chair would entertain a motion to waive the formal reading of those minutes and approve them in the form presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting as presented.
Motion is made by Mr. Crosby. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Heager, excuse me, is there a second? It's Mr. Crosby on the second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the adoption of the minutes from the last meeting, August 19th, so signify...
Please, we can't hear back yet.
So signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that is unanimous vote of all members present and voted. We do have a couple of public hearings that are scheduled, three public hearings that are scheduled for this evening, the first of which is 7:15. We do have a little bit of time prior to that, so we will go out of order and take up the, just a brief discussion with respect to accessory dwelling units. Mr. Gardner.
Yeah, so for everyone's information, in the most current affordable housing laws that were passed by our legislature just recently and signed by the governor, there's been a modification to the, what previously was called an accessory family unit, which would allow basically an in-law apartment to be built within a single-family home with certain permits through the building department. The state of Massachusetts has found it appropriate to modify that section of the bylaw that describes what those are. They've changed the name from accessory family unit to accessory dwelling unit, which oversimplified without getting into the specific details of the law, now basically says that anybody on a single-family home can build a second unit within that home and allow that unit to be occupied by anyone, not just a family member. It's also allowed to be rented out to a third party as an income-producing property. Next part of that is it also allows that to be a standalone building on a single-family lot, which means you could theoretically either redesign your standalone garage into a family dwelling unit, with the caveats being that the family dwelling unit must be smaller than, I believe it's half of the gross square footage of the existing building, or 900 square feet, whichever is the smaller number. So somewhat oversimplified for the majority of houses in the R1 zone in the town of East Bridgewater, that accessory dwelling unit would be limited to 900 square feet gross floor area. Now gross floor area under the building code in the state of Massachusetts means effectively the foundation size of the building. So 900 square feet is not awfully big, but on a single-family home with a foundation area of 1,000 square feet or 2,000 square feet, and if it's a two-story building, those numbers are times two. Means you could build a separate, again, separate unit within the existing building of 900 square feet, or a standalone building on the lot of 900 square feet, i.e. a small cottage, rather, if you will. Additional criteria within that zoning bylaw are that the owner of the building does not have to be resident within the building, so both units can be rented. So someone could buy a small, single-family home, expand the single-family home, put in a second accessory dwelling unit on the property, and rent both units as rental properties. And that covers the entire R1 zone within the town of East Bridgewater, which last time I calculated was somewhere around 68% of the town. Now, another important note is that that's a state bylaw that's not subject to vote at an annual town meeting. That's a state bylaw that's already been adopted. Now, the town has what's called an accessory family unit bylaw within its zoning bylaw. We, the planning board, are going to propose, and we're planning on having a hearing on October 7th on the new wording, is to change our accessory use and accessory family unit bylaw to add some additional constraints that are allowed under the state law within that accessory dwelling unit within our local zoning bylaw. So again, for clarity, the intent is to have a public hearing in this room at 6:00 p.m. on October 7th. Adjourn that hearing, close the hearing, make a recommendation, and go directly to town meeting on October 7th at 7:00 p.m. at the high school, where we're having a special town meeting. So again, final time, we can't prevent this from happening. What we can do is adopt some constraints within our local zoning bylaw to add some additional conditions if someone wants to apply for those zoning bylaws, which are pretty much that, number one, it must comply with the current zoning bylaw, and number two, it must comply with the height restrictions in our current zoning bylaw, which would mean it's restricted to two and a half stories, and we'll still have the standard setbacks under the current zoning bylaw. So again, that's a general overview of what the state has forced upon us, in addition to what we're going to talk about in the public hearing at 7:30. I see a hand back.
Yeah, so we're not going to do a lot of discussion on, yeah, just hang on one second. So we're just not going to do a lot of discussion on this tonight, because as Mr. Gardner says, it's going to be a public hearing on the 7th at 6:00 p.m. Questions or whatever, but you've had your hand up for a bit, so we'll recognize you, and then we'll move on to our public hearing schedule for tonight. So go ahead, sir.
Just a quick question.
Name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Jerry Adams, 202 Sherwood Circle. Quick question on occupancy. Is there any constraints on occupancy for these dwellings, or just pile people in as you want? You can pile as many people in that square footage as you want?
That would fall under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts health codes that are constrained by the health department.
Is there any way that we could put local constraints on that?
That would still be under the health codes, under the building codes and under the zoning codes. We're not allowed to constrain occupancy numbers.
So Marilyn Smollett, 745 Bridge Street. So the last discussion on this will be on the 7th at 6:00, and then is voted on at 7:00?
That's correct. That's correct.
So there's no discussion any between now and then, or is it...
Well, I think, as I tried to state, and I think stated clearly, this is state law that's already been adopted.
Right, but you also said that you're not going to take any questions tonight, really.
I think we just did take two, if I understand correctly.
Well, there were two questions.
Yeah, last question, ma'am. Go ahead.
Tim Sheehan, 35 Meadowbrook Drive. The one question I have is how does the, like, the current septic laws, you know, as far as like your...
They still have to comply in full with all Title V and all health requirements.
Would be limited to three, if it was like a three-bedroom system, they would be limited to a three-bedroom system between two units?
If they had a house that had a permitted three-bedroom Title V system, and they added an additional dwelling unit, whether it be within the building or as a standalone unit, that building had two additional bedrooms that have to upgrade the septic system to a Title V five-bedroom system.
Do they have enough room for all that? I mean, it sounds like it's pretty big.
That's site to site, that's site to site. That's not, you know...
Most R1 lots in the town of East Bridgewater are 35,000 square feet. So that probably fits most of the building requirements, whether or not, given the tough areas in the town of East Bridgewater, whether they can meet Title V requirements is a separate issue that's basically in another room, so to speak.
So how would we find out more information about how this passed the state? Was that on the ballot? Was that just done...
Legislature did that.
That's right. It's part of the governor's affordable housing initiatives and was passed in...
Without a vote?
Sorry?
So that was done without a vote to the people?
No, no. It was passed by the legislature and signed into law by the governor, I believe, in June. So it's out there now. It's been out there for a couple of months, and what the town of East Bridgewater, through the planning board, is trying to do is basically punch up what, you know, the state law says in ways that we can do it to, you know, to better define it and regulate it. So that's what we'll be doing on the 7th.
Okay, thank you.
There will be some additional question-and-answer kind of stuff that I downloaded from the state website that just was posted late last week. That will be posted on the planning board website. We will attempt to get that posted on the town clerk's website as well. That should be posted later this week.
Okay, it being 7:15, we do have a continued public hearing for the property at 140 Laurel Street, the so-called 47 Brands property. We have received a request from the applicant to further continue that hearing, basically where we are. We have, our engineers, our consulting engineers have reviewed it. They have sent comments back to the engineering folks for the applicant. The applicant's engineer has not yet responded with, or to those comments, so that's the reason that the further continuance is requested. And at this point, the Chair would entertain a motion to continue, further continue this matter with an appropriate submission, which has already been made by the applicant, and consent to October 21 at 7:15 p.m.
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Heager. Further discussion on that there being none. Matter is stands continued. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. Matter stands continued until 10:21 at 7:15 p.m.
Can we ask a question on that, or is it closed?
I don't see why not, since we still got to wait 12... Yeah, we've got a little bit of time, so it's just basic general questions.
Yeah, just a general question. So that 47 Brand, they got a tax incentive fund back in 2017. So I just have a couple of questions.
Just identify yourself for the record, if you would.
Kathleen Lynch, 170 West Union Street. So 47 Brand got a big tax incentive when they relocated to East Bridgewater, I think, back in 2017, and they made some promises about investments in the town, 15.6 million to buy the building, 1 million to renovate, and 2 million in equipment, so about $18 million in investments that they were supposed to hold up that end of the bargain. So do we know if they've made those investments before we're approving additional access?
Good question to be asked of council, and we can certainly check in the meanwhile. We'll check on our end and council, when council is present on the 21st. It's a fine question to ask.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have a few minutes before our 7:30 public hearing. Any other matters, Mr. Gardner, that want to be discussed? Did you want to... Is he being a letter that wants me to leave him alone at this point?
No, I just think we should put that on our agenda for October 21st. If it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'd say just a quick couple of comments about that. Nothing...
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead.
So one of the things we are required to do, as the planning board is required to officially respond to the, respond to the zoning board of appeals related to the current Meadowbrook project that's being proposed for the north section of land between Route 18 and Winter Street. That's a 40B project. That project is officially before the zoning board of appeals. But the way 40B projects work, the planning board, in fact, all boards within the town in relation to the various disciplines they have, are expected to write a formal letter to the zoning board of appeals, making recommendations as to what they feel or what we feel would be a reasonable set of conditions to put on their 40B approval, which I think has been stated many times in the past. That 40B approval is basically a done deal. In the state of Massachusetts, you cannot deny a 40B. If you do deny a 40B, the state will immediately overrule you and let the project go as proposed by the applicant without any changes. Up until now, I believe that the last count was there's been 18 denials. 17 of those denials were 100% overridden by the state. One of those denials, because it had some conditions on it, was overridden by the state, and several of those conditions were allowed to stand. So the clear message is in the hundred and some odd of those that have been approved, that the only solution we have is in approval with some conditions as proposed by the multiple town boards in formal response to the zoning board of appeals. So that's going to be on our agenda for our second meeting in October, which will be October 21st, what we're going to make as suggestions to the zoning board of appeals. So technically speaking, in terms of the planning board, that's not a public hearing, but it will be a public meeting in which the members of the board discuss the criteria which we want to pass on to the zoning board of appeals for that proposal. And I know a question that's going to get asked here is, is the land that that proposal is on, is that the exact same land that we're proposing to zone as part of our MBTA overlay district? The answer to that is yes, it is. Now, how those two things interact is still somewhat uncertain, but there is at least some hope that if there's no building permits prior to adopting the MBTA zoning district, that those units would count towards our MBTA units in terms of total number of dwelling units required under the MBTA zoning district. We've been unable to get a formal answer to that yet, but it does appear that if those building permits aren't pulled, and they won't be pulled before town meeting on October 7th, it's physically not possible, because the ZBA would not have acted prior to that. So it does appear that if the building permits are pulled in the area that we rezone or potentially rezone, then those would count as MBTA zoning units. And we do have a member of OCPC who just entered the room, who I'm sure will try and get us further clarification on that. As up to date, right now, we've not been able to get that clear yes or no answer. And the chairman may have vacated the room, because he's an abut to this project. And he can't officially be involved in discussions, although I don't think anything we're doing right now is technically considered a detailed pertinent discussion on that area and on that 40B project. Just for everyone's clarity, that the project that he lives in, or the area he lives in, is actually also a 40B project, because it's Wayside Farms, which is right across the street.
Didn't have too many illegals back then either.
So if anybody wants to look at what some potential 40B projects look like, you could take a ride through Wayside Farms, which is right off of 18, or you could take a look at the project in West Bridgewater, which is near the intersection of the East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater by the traffic light next to the golf course.
East Street and 106.
Yeah, East Street and 106. There's four 12-unit buildings there. That's actually a 40B project, but those 12-unit buildings would, we expect, look exactly like what they could build under our MBTA zoning district bylaw, 12-unit buildings on one acre, and that's exactly what those are. Those are 12-unit buildings on approximately one acre each.
Yeah, hi. I'm Richard Flaherty, 31 Robot Street. My question is in regards to this Meadowbrook. I understand, you know, it's being classified as a 40B. Why would you encompass it falling under the MBTA Communities Act? Because from what I read, I don't think it qualifies.
Well, we've asked that question, and no one in the knowledge base at the state has yet been able to answer the question for us.
I think it's pretty clear. Now, probably we talk...
So let me try and answer that maybe a little better. That area has always been part of the MBTA zoning district from when we first started drafting the map almost a year and a half ago. We didn't receive that application for the 40B there until after we had already defined what the map looked like. So it was already there. The map was already there.
Okay. Well, I'll save my, I'll reserve other farms until the next topic comes up.
Okay. It then being 7:30, we do have a public hearing with regard to the first of the two MBTA communities overlay districts, that being the north district, as we were just referring to. Read the public notice. Planning board of the town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing Monday, September 16th, 2024 at 7:30 p.m. in the Town Office Building, 175 Central Street, large second-floor conference room. Purpose of the hearing will be to review a proposed amendment to the zoning bylaws of the town whereby a new section entitled MBTA Communities Single and Multi-Family Overlay District North, or MBTAODN, would be added. The proposed MBTAODN would allow the construction of single and multifamily housing and/or mixed-use development as a matter of right in accordance with the requirements of Mass General Law's Chapter 48, Section 3A, and the planning board seeks public input relative to this proposal. The full text of the proposed zoning bylaw, together with the plans which illustrate the areas which would be included in the MBTAODN, are available for review with the planning building department during the hours of 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. A notice of this was published in the enterprise on Friday, August 30th, and Monday, September 9th. So that being said, again, this is, I think, for most of you who are here in the room, or many of you at least, this is not anything necessarily new. We've had multiple discussions about this in the past, and we will just do a brief overview tonight. I think both of the bylaws, I would tell you, are identical, other than in terms of the land area that they cover. Otherwise, they are identical in their nature, but we will begin with that in the north end. And Roy, if you had any opening thoughts, we can take those now, which is by way of explanation, and then we'll open up for public comment and go from there.
So what's up here now is the beginning of what is currently a 12-page document defining what we're referring to is going to be Section 16 of the town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaw, MBTA Communities North, Single and Multifamily Overlay District. The purpose basically defines what we're doing here, that this is to allow single and multifamily housing as a right in accordance with Section 3 of the zoning act. and multifamily housing as a right in accordance with Section 3A of the Zoning Act, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48. The zoning provides for as of right, single and multifamily housing, high-density zoning, to accomplish the following purposes. Those purposes all come directly out of the state law, and that's to provide an option for smaller-lot, single-family residences with a goal of providing more reasonable-cost smaller, single-family homes, and to provide an option for smaller-lot duplex residential homes, to provide options for large-scale multifamily residential housing, and to offer mixed-use development to foster both walkable neighborhoods in conjunction with more reasonable-cost Now, there's an extensive number of details and definitions in here, but they all come out of the, the boil-plate recommend, recommendations under state law. I, I think the next thing we probably want to discuss and quickly go over is the, we've developed a, a zoning table of what's going to be allowed and on what size lots it's going to be allowed. It's a relatively simple table that includes under the, all of the standard requirements under zoning, which is minimum lot area, minimum lot width, width, minimum lot depth, minimum side yards, minimum rear yards, minimum front yards.
Principal building footprint.
Principal building footprint, percentage of the lot. The building rectangle, which is the rectangle that fits within the overall lot to show that the building actually will fit within the lot, then the maximum height of the building. What's that last?
Average lots per acre.
Oh, that's the average number.
Average units per acre, sorry.
Average number of units per acre. So, so a single-family residential unit would be allowed on a 10,000-square-foot lot. A duplex house would be allowed on a 14,000-square-foot lot. A quad unit would be allowed on 18,000 square feet. A six-unit building on 22,000 square feet. An eight-unit building on 26,000 square feet. A 10-unit building on 30,000 square feet. A 12-unit building on 34,800 square feet. Now, all except the eight, 10, and 12-unit buildings would be limited to two and a half stories. The eight, 10, and 12-unit buildings would be three and a half stories. And again, for clarity and viewing purposes, the, those buildings that are at that site in West Bridgewater next to the golf course, those are 12-unit buildings on 35,000 square feet, three and a half stories tall. So, that type of building would fit the requirement within the Town of East Bridgewater zoning Any, any questions on, on that?
What's a half-story?
Basement.
It basically allows for the, the roof line and the slope of the roof line.
Maybe the attic.
Yeah, we, we, it doesn't, it's typically not referred to under the building code as the attic, but we would, in generic terms, typically call that the attic.
Nonlivable.
Yes. Now, we'll take a quick look at the, at the, the actual map. We get this to do what we wanted, we'd be good. Rachel, can you, can you, can you slide forward, please?
Oh, slide forward.
Your head's in the way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Okay, this is the actual MBTA North zoning map, which, as was noted earlier, doesn't include some of the same land area that's being in the, in the proposed 40B. But everything within those red lines is, is, is part of this proposed zoning district. And, and I believe if my memory is correct, there's a total of 112 acres within this.
116.15.
116.15 acres within that, that red-lined area. Now, somewhere between 40 to 60% of that is potentially not buildable because of wetlands constraints, but we believe that still leaves roughly 50 to 60 acres of buildable land there. Roughly half of that 60 acres of buildable land is contained within the proposed 40B that's currently before ZBA. A couple of things to know about this, and, and questions have been raised in the past. Number one is, the town already has a municipal use agreement with the City of Brockton for sewage in that area, municipal wastewater treatment. It's in a line that's already designed and is intended to start physical construction in the fall, sometime in the very near future, which would run a line down Thatcher Street, down Summer Street, where it intersects with Thatcher Street, then down Winter Street, where it intersects with Summer Street, and onto this property at this upper portion here of Winter Street. The street shown right, right there to the left of this piece in the upper-left-hand corner is Winter Street. That's where the wastewater treatment line would run. It would run all the way out to Route 18 from Winter Street. And it'll eventually run down on Route 18, hopefully over time, all the way to the Equity Industrial Partners property, which is the former Foxborough Company property. In terms of water availability, the town already has a, I believe it's an 18-inch water main connection to the City of Brockton at Thatcher Street. That already has valves and meters on it, has been used several times in the past for emergency use, and, and can potentially be used as a, if we were to get a municipal use agreement with the City of Brockton to provide additional water if necessary. As it currently stands, the DPW has indicated they have more than enough water to satisfy the requirements of the current proposals for this area. I think the next thing we want to recognize is that what we're proposing here is a zoning change. Now, independent of the current 40B proposal, there is no other projects currently proposed for this area. If we were to rezone it, that would mean individual investors and/or developers could then come to us and propose a project for that area. Those projects would be built at market rate, and those projects would be required to cover all costs of providing services to those properties, i.e., municipal wastewater and water treatment. So, so the town would not be contributing any dollars to the developer doing this. That is strictly be for-profit development that would be developed over time. I'm not sure I have anything to add on that. We should see if any board members have questions.
The only thing I would make note of is that there, there will be one addition. There was one omission from, from Section D 3B. So, D 3B talks about accessory uses, and the one addition which we would want to make there would be to add the language under B, strike out what's there, identify of right accessory use is appropriate, and that would basically say, "Any use meeting the definition of quote-unquote accessory use under the terms of the zoning bylaws of the Town of East Bridgewater." So, any accessory use that is currently permitted in the town would be, would be appropriate under this bylaw. The other comment that I'd make at this point, for those of you, you know, in the audience, as I say, I know most of you have been here, many of you have been here, but this is the, the response of the Town of East Bridgewater to the mandate of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that these sorts of, of housing opportunities in areas be developed by cities and towns across the state by, with a December 31st, 2024 deadline. So, you know, as Mr. Gardner has indicated, these, these are, a lot of this that you see in print is what has been recommended by various state agencies as language that would be appropriate, acceptable, language that's been used by other communities that have been approved already. The other thing I would point out, and I think we've pointed it out before, is that both of these bylaws do contain provisions which indicate that if, for any reason, as, as many of you know, the, the, the whole constitutionality of the Section 3A, the so-called MBTA Communities zoning bylaw, is being challenged by the Town of Milton, among others, and if that is proven, or decided rather, to be invalid, that Section 3A is invalid, this law, this bylaw does have provision that would invalidate it. So, it would no longer have any effect in the Town of East Bridgewater. Again, the procedure here is that the board will have public hearings on both of these matters tonight. The board will make a recommendation to the town meeting upcoming, which is on the 7th of October, and the town meeting will be responsible for voting yea or nay as to the adoption of these two bylaws. That said, is there any other member of the board at this point that has any questions before I open to the audience for their questions and comments? No? Okay. Sir, start with you.
Thank you. Again, my name is Richard O'Flaherty, 31 Hobart Street, here in town. Just for FYI, I sat like you folks here some 20-odd years ago making decisions and recommendations over a few controversial, controversial issues. Then I can see by the tenants here that there's probably some questions on people's minds. I'm going to attempt to clarify some things, and I just want to state, in anything that I say, I'm not against housing, whether it's affordable housing, market-rate housing. I know that there's a need in the whole Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the United States for housing, and I think as a community, you have to do things that will encourage that. I've heard negative comments about, you know, certain types of housing, you know, it, it depletes values in homes that you may live in. I think that's completely false, and I don't think that there's any evidence that's, that supports that. Again, just some more FYI. I am a realtor. I've been a realtor for 40 years. Well, no, I've been a broker for 40 years. I've been a realtor for the last three years. So, I, I encourage housing anywhere, primarily if, if it's done right. Now, I had talked with Ray, oh, a few, a few months ago in regards to some information that I heard that was completely misinformation. I guess Facebook, East Bridgewater Hub, has some dialogue that goes on about the type of housing down for the center of town, the Eastern, Eastern State Steels, and that's what I want to talk about here. The way I read the law, and I have it right here, is that it requires that an MBTA community, and that's what we are, even though we don't have bus service here, and we're more than two miles away from the station. So, that's part of the requirement, but the law, I understand, circumvents that.
An adjacent community.
As an adjacent community, correct. So, it says that the town, the city should have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing, not single-family housing, not mixed-use, meaning single-family, multi-housing, and commercial, commercial interests. Just, it, it just talks about multifamily housing, and it's permitted as a right. So, that means that they can do it, and I don't believe that they have to go through any zoning bylaws, and it meets other criteria, which they don't say. But it has to have a gross density of 15 units, a minimum gross density, I should say, 15 units per acre, not located more than a half a mile from the commuter, commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, bus terminal. There's no age restrictions. So, we'd fall under this adjacent community because we have Enhanson, Bridgewater, Whitman, and there's three commuter rail stops in Brockton.
That's enough.
Huh?
That's enough MBTI. They're all around us.
Yeah, yeah. We don't have it, though.
All right, let, let, let.
Make your point, buddy.
Yeah, I am, I am.
I want to talk as long as you that you be down.
So, my, my question here is, is why is the town or the planning board suggesting that you enhance or bring more than what is required by the, by the state law? And that would be the addition of single-family housing, because the law doesn't require that. And that's in the project up at Meadowbrook and this one here, Eastern State Steels. Like I say, I'm not against housing, as long as.
I think you're misreading the law.
I don't think I am. Please alert me if I am.
Excuse me, I'm trying to answer your question.
Okay.
So, so let me answer your question. What the law says is they want a more affordable housing in all of the communities in the MBTA districts. What they've said is they want you to allow up to 15 units per acre, and that's in the thousand pages of additional documentation that is under that bylaw on the state website. There's no details in the bylaw. Those are all issued, and there is literally approximately 1,000 pages of guidance on the mass housing website that falls out of that bylaw. The suggestion is to each town to develop a bylaw that would best fit what the developers would prefer to build in those communities. Now, it's clear to me as a 40-year member of this board that most developers are not going to make a lot of money by coming into East Bridgewater and building 20 12-unit buildings in some complex in a corner. They're going to want to build what would be the most marketable properties within the community. Our view is that, at least my view, and I believe the majority of this board's view, is that the most marketable properties in a community like Bridgewater, East Bridgewater would be smaller houses on smaller lots in duplexes and, and quads and things like that. There's nothing in the bylaw prohibit, the state bylaw prohibiting that.
Well, let me just respond to that then, okay? To, to, to your answer to me. Then why not encourage Eastern State Steels, and I don't know how many acres it is, I didn't, I didn't read it, to be similar to Lea, Leitham Way? That's a cluster development, smaller lots. Because that's basically, from what I'm hearing, what you described to me, is that's what you're doing.
There's a simple answer to that, a very simple answer.
Okay.
For that land to be used, we're going to have to get, or the developer will have to get, a significant amount of both state and federal grants from the state and federal brownfield cleanup sites. Neither the state nor the federal government is going to allow those, or grant, grant those monies to something that doesn't include affordable, fairly-high-density housing. That isn't happening. They've already told us that.
That's the way it is.
They said, "You're wasting your time if you come ask for a grant to put in 10 single-family homes on 14 acres."
Well, you told me a couple of months ago, when I asked you. Well, you told me a couple of months ago, when I asked you, was it going to be affordable? You said, "No, it's going to be market rate," which is different. And I think market rate in the town, and correct me if I'm wrong, is probably $2,000 a month for a two-bedroom dwelling.
Everything that's being, would be built under the MBTA community's bylaw is market rate, open pricing, whatever the market will bear. There's no constraints for affordable housing on it. That's the way the law is written. The law allows us to put constraints for affordable housing, if we deem that appropriate. But I think our general feeling is, we prefer to go with straight, open, market-rate housing, that the developers, doing their, you know, spreadsheet calculations, believe that if they invest in the property, they do what they need to do to get the property usable for residential housing, that they're going to make a return on their investment.
I understand all of that. Then why do it? Why even suggest, you know, having a public hearing on this? Because I know, because we looked at this back over twenty years ago, Eastern State Steels, and encouraged something to go in there, but the cost of the cleanup was extensive.
And we've been told multiple times, we're not going to get grant money unless we propose something that's high-density housing.
They're doing it up at Meadowbrook.
That's blackmail.
You only need one. One zoning area. And you have that up at Meadowbrook, or you're proposing that up at Meadowbrook.
You don't need a second.
Well, as members of the planning board, we'll disagree on that, because we want the downtown to become a vital downtown, and we want that, we want that mess cleaned up that's been there for three decades.
Understood. And I agree with you, but that's not commercial development. That doesn't bring in tax revenue that the town may need. It's going to cost, it's going to be added to public services, the police, the fire, and the schools, depending on how many units there are that go there.
Sir, in the back. Yes, sir?
I got nothing right now.
Okay. Other comments?
So another comment that was thrown out without any backup, police, fire, and schools, all three of those have been presented multiple times as part of the Meadowbrook proposal that all of that concern is false. It's documented, proven by numbers in the town to be false. Our school system had 2,500 students in it eighteen years ago. Our school system today still has space for close to 2,500 students. There's 2,000 students today. If this is totally built out, the expected increase in students, Meadowbrook expects somewhere between eighty and a hundred over time as the units get phased in and as families grow. If the rest of this is developed for another three or four hundred units in total, that would generate another somewhere between a hundred and 150 students, based on documented, clear trending that's in the census numbers and in school department numbers over a two-decade period. This idea that we're going to get five or six hundred students is false on its face.
How do you know? How do you know that?
You don't know.
All of the towns in southeastern Massachusetts have numbers to document the growth rates, including those towns that have multiple new 40Bs. Bridgewater is one. Bridgewater has 900 new 40B units over the last five years. School enrollment is up 2%. Those numbers are being proven repeatedly throughout southeastern Massachusetts.
No, and I only raise that, Roy, because you're talking about a vibrant downtown. And I've been here close to forty years, and the town, the center of town has not changed. It's not an easy town to travel through, and I don't think that it's an easy town to do business in. I think that there are certain restrictions on businesses that make it difficult for a small business to operate, or a medium-sized. I know that they've offered tax grants for, what's that, 47-a-half company, that they're there. And all I'm just trying to say, and I'm not trying to make a big deal out of anything, my concern, and it's not a big concern, because I favor housing, is that what the planning board is encouraging the town to accept in the community is things that don't fall under the law, as I read it. And, you know, if you're saying that the thousands of pages and documents support what you're putting into this--
This came straight out of the state website.
Well--
Straight out of the state website.
Well, I'm just, I'm just reading what, you know, what the state has here, and they comment for fifteen units per acre, multifamily, not single-family.
It says up to fifteen units per acre.
Up to.
Big difference.
But you could do fifteen units per acre.
Absolutely.
You know?
And that's what they're going to do. Why would you make it smaller?
Why would a developer want to build a twelve-unit building of rental apartments when he could build four single-family homes that he could sell for $2 million and get his cash day one? What developer would want to do that?
Because once the state gets involved--
The state's not involved here. The state is not involved here. All of these permits go through the office down the hall.
Did you just say that the state--
Is funding it.
--will mandate, they're not even going to give you grants?
State's not funding a dime here.
You said they're going to--
A builder wouldn't be able to do anything unless they comply to what the state asks for, or they will not get grants.
No, that's not what, I believe the comment was intended to reflect, as we've said at other meetings, that in order for the town to qualify for any grants, in order to be able to begin the process of cleanup, that there needs to be an identifiable goal with respect to that property. That will help the grant process. And I think, you correct me if I'm wrong, Roy, but I believe that's what you--
Absolutely. Cleaning up the property and then further getting building permits and all those kind of things, those building permits and all of the development after that is independent of the state and federal government.
So our information is that without a vision, okay, the state, the applications for state and federal money go nowhere. Other comments, questions? Sir?
Rich Barrioli, Summit Drive. So state to us what your proposal is going to be to the zoning board appeals. What are you going to propose?
We can't, we can't comment on that tonight, because that's not on the table tonight. That's a totally separate project. The Meadowbrook Chapter 40B is a totally separate project, and that's not on our agenda tonight. It's on our agenda for--
On Eastern State Steel, what are you going to propose to the zoning board?
Nothing. There's nothing to propose--
The zoning board appeals has nothing to do with the Eastern State Steel property.
Yeah, so what is your feeling? What would you like to see happen there? What does the board--
Where?
--want at West Union Street, across from the post office?
The most ideal proposal, in my opinion, and I think we should hold that till the next public hearing, because we actually have a separate map and a separate bylaw for that. But I'll be happy to answer that question in the next public hearing session, which is the downtown district.
I was just trying to get a feeling what the board would like to see going. You've heard what we want to see there, or we'd like to see something different here than housing and businesses. What we would like to know, what the board would like is going to propose, or what you feel is best for the town.
Well, let's, if we're done with the questions on the north district, then I entertain a motion to close that public hearing at this time.
Are there any other questions with respect to--
I do. I have a question about that proposal. The number of bedrooms that they're proposing in addition to, so if we factor in that there's one bedroom for every unit, take those number of bedrooms off the table, there's 320 additional bedrooms that would house, I think, at least one child. So as a matter of being transparent, we have to assume that there's going to be 320 more kids that are coming into the system.
Actually, that's incorrect.
Based on the numbers that I--
No.
So do we have, I've tried--
So let's, let me directly answer that--
Sure.
--based on repeated numbers throughout southeastern Massachusetts communities. The average number of physical persons in single-family homes and in individual apartments in southeastern Massachusetts has gone from 4.8 to 3.1 over the last two decades. The average number of residents overall in the town of East Bridgewater in four-bedroom and three-bedroom homes is 3.1.
So empty bedrooms?
Absolutely. And when you, you've got to think about that.
Sure.
What do you have for single-family homes? You've got, you've got people living over either four to fifty decades of time. In any one of those homes, there's probably, as in my home right now, I have a four-bedroom house in town. My wife and I live there. That's it.
And the dog.
There's at lea, and the dog.
Those affordable units, they're only going to allow them so much money towards rent, I believe, or towards purchase, if they have a number of children to fill those bedrooms. Is that correct, or am I wrong?
That's incorrect. Affordable units are based strictly on the income of the applicants. And only 20% of those units are going to be affordable, not 100%. The other 80%, they're free to rent out at market price.
Is the public, the comment carried over? Because I just wanted to respond to Roy's--
No, we're going to, sir. Again.
Robert, yes, 792 South Street. Going back to something you said, Mr. Gardner, the sewer line isn't really for the next, well, it should say the first project, which is Project A. There's like four phases, four, A, B, C.
Four phases.
That's not the first one. But the sewer line, you said it's coming in, is going to be someplace in that area, like there's 120-3 lot, that's where, that's where the first one is, right? It's going out to Winter Street?
It's actually way up the top at like 129. There was lots up at the top. There's 128, 9, 10, and 11.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, all right. It's going, that sewer line's going down Winter Street, and down Summer Street.
And hook around at that intersection where Summer and Thatcher come together and go up Thatcher Street. Yes.
Okay. It's real personal, because I live right there.
I understand that. I know where you live.
So the next question is, when's it going to start? About soon?
It's supposed to start, the initial part of the project is supposed to be done, which I believe is the Thatcher Street section, before the, before the winter hits.
Okay. Here's a $64,000 question. When will it end?
Supposedly, the entire project is going to take somewhere between 18 and 20 months. Yeah, it's--
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, it's not an ideal situation, but--
No, not for us. Thank you.
At the town meeting, there was two things that were brought up about, when they did the traffic study, that was done during COVID. Have they permitted any since then?
Again, you're talking about the 40B proposal, which is not what we're talking about here. So I don't mean to dismiss your question. My understanding was, if I'm correct, that they were going to redo or reexamine that?
They are already working on an updated traffic study. That's correct.
And Roy, I think you brought up a good point at that meeting about parking. There was, for tri, tri units, there was only one--
Yeah, we are going to discuss that further at our meeting on October 21st, but it does appear, based on just simple numbers of average parking spaces for apartments, that the number they're proposing is woefully inadequate.
That gives us an opportunity to shrink the project a little bit, then.
I can't guarantee that, but I would say that there will be suggestions coming from the planning board that they stick to relatively standardized parking requirements for apartments in southeastern Massachusetts. Yes.
Thank you.
Behind the pole, yes. Sorry, can't see you back there.
Gail, 1519 Woodland Lane, Mr. Foreman. So this development doesn't have to be done, correct?
So, yeah, so I would strongly suggest we don't use the term "development." We're zoning a piece of land that potentially developers, at some future time, could decide would be beneficial to them financially to come in and to develop. There is no--
I believe you said that the board said that they thought this is what the town should do, and that shouldn't the taxpayers of the town be the ones, the people who are paying the taxes?
Ultimately, they will. It's a town meeting decision to be made. This board is only making--
It doesn't sound that way.
This board is only making a recommendation. That's the only role this board has, is to make a recommendation as to whether the town meeting should adopt or not adopt the proposals that you see before you for these two new sections.
And is it put to a vote?
Yes.
By the people in the town?
Yes.
So this won't go through unless there's a vote that's on?
Sufficient vote at town meeting, that's correct.
Yeah, but now, let's make sure we be careful that we don't, we don't mix up the fact that this is an MBTA zoning district bylaw.
This is not the 40B project.
This is not the 40B project that's for ZBA. Those are two totally separate things.
Well, my thought is just, why not wait? Wouldn't the rush? Why not wait and see what the--
Commonwealth of Massachusetts has given us until the 31st of December of this year to adopt a bylaw to promote, if you will, affordable housing initiatives and such. And failing that, the town is at risk of various--
What? Can I, I see a member from O'Callaghan Planning Council is present, would like to say a word here.
No, I just, just a point of clarification. 40B is all about affordable housing. MBTA communities or 3A has nothing to do with affordable housing. And so sometimes there's conflation of the two, because both are zoning, both have to do with housing production and development. But essentially, 40B, they're two pieces, different pieces of legislation. 40B allows developers to override local zoning ordinances if you're under the state sort of 10% standard. MBTA communities has nothing to do with any of that. It's just zoning for multifamily housing by rent. Now, multifamily housing is, has different contexts for different communities. It's everything from a duplex all the way up to, you know, a high-rise. And so East Bridgewater could see, I don't know, let's say, 10,000 40B units. None of those are a requirement or add to your MBTA community's multifamily housing count unless they're in the district that you zone for housing. And so generally, people talk about both as the same thing, but they're two very, very different things. You could have 750 units, 500 units, 400, oh, one unit in your housing district. Those are the ones that count towards your overall MBTA housing goals or 3A housing goals. It has nothing to do with 40B. And I can be, I can stick around if anyone has any other questions afterwards to sort of talk about this.
So I guess my point is, why are you pushing for two of these projects at the same time? Why not do the first one and see how it affects our town and the traffic and the schools and everything else first? Why, what is the push to do two big projects that will change?
When you're talking about two, are you talking about North and Downtown, or are you talking about 40B and North?
I think it's fairly clear she's talking about both North and Downtown. There's a fairly simple and clear answer to that, and that's because the guidance from the state says they want to see part of this MBTA zoning district in each community's downtown area. They want to see walkable downtowns with multifamily housing in them. That's become very clear from the documents that they've got recorded.
But that's a--
So we can't, we can't possibly, we can't possibly put the required number of housing units under the zoning bylaw that falls under this in the downtown area, because we come into a 10% category, which means we need 520, give or take, housing units under the MBTA zoning bylaw. We really can't fit all of those housing units in one of these locations. And in addition to that, the state wants to see some of these housing units in downtown areas.
We don't have a downtown.
Sir, back to you.
We just touched on it a little bit. If we, that's great what the state wants, but East Bridgewater, us in East Bridgewater might not want it. What are the issues if we, if we go against the state? What are the penalties? And I think you were about to hit on it, and it stopped. What are they going to hold us for? They going to arrest hostage?
I think the penalties are that the state is indicating that for the next fiscal year--
They're going to keep our--
They're going to constrain at least three different grants that are actually listed on the state website. And then, depending on how much pushback they have, there's two other grants that they've indicated they may cut back on.
There's a total of 13 grants. These are elected officials.
So basically, grants are our money. We give our taxes-- We give our taxes to the state, and then they say, oh, you want your money back in a grant?
Yes, absolutely.
They're holding us hostage.
Grants come from income that the state receives. Most of that income is from taxes of one kind or another. Yes, absolutely correct.
So, they're holding our money hostage if we don't listen to them.
I'm not sure I'd use that language, but, but basically, that's correct.
Sir, one more comment, and then I'll take the lady in the back.
Well, the state is saying that they have to do it. They have to zone an area. So, that, that's a state law, and that's something we're going to have to take up with Maury Healy.
We just did that.
Well, my, my comment is, this council here, you said it earlier when I, I offered some comments, that you've already had it zoned under the...
MBTA.
MBTA commuter, commuter...
We haven't zoned it yet, that's what we're proposing for town meeting.
It's always been part of the discussion.
It's been on the map for almost two years since, since the state passed that law.
Oh, I, I apologize because you made it sound like it was much longer, it's been on the map for much longer.
No, because the MBTA bylaw was adopt, or zoning law was adopted by the state, it's a little over two, it may be getting on three years now, but, but we started, we started as soon as that was adopted, where can we go? And we already knew to support that kind of density in housing, we had to have municipal wastewater. We already were two years into a negotiating session with the city of Brockton to get municipal wastewater for this area, all the way down to the, well, basically, to the former Compass Medical.
The state isn't saying that it has to be wastewater, it's, it could be private. Because that's what the law says, it could be private stuff.
No, but the state is saying it has to be land that's suitable for wastewater disposal. We don't have any land where you could put 500 units.
So, that land up there on Winter Street, it's, it's not perccable, that would support...
Not 500 units, or 300 units.
Ma'am, in the back.
Hi, yep, just question, comments related to the downtown project specifically?
Go on.
Let's move to that. Why don't we just, why don't we close the hearing and move on?
One question that I had for you, Roy. Didn't you say there was some kind of verbiage in there that all of those were going to count towards 40B even though there was only a small percentage?
It's not, it's not in the law. We've been trying to find out from the state if we pass this zoning law before any building permits or even the 40B permit is issued, will those units count as part of this area under MBTA zoning criteria? And the answer, somewhat wishy-washy, appears to be yes, since there's nothing there yet, and this is the land that we're zoning.
So, that's what Wyman did, so I live in, I live in Wyman, I'm a neighbor. We, we adopt, we ended up adopting 3A over by the train and so the industrial areas. The, the thought there, and I left before the vote actually happened, but the thought there was if you target an area for multifamily housing, you can essentially target 40B development in the MBTA zoning, rather than developers determining where they want to build the housing. And so, although MBTA communities and 40B are different pieces of legislation, if you do it in a, I don't know, strategic kind of way, you can sort of like double dip to have 40B developments targeted in your MBTA zoning district, if that makes sense?
Well, there's also a thought on, on some of the consultants that if we had to do this, then the possibility of that 40B morphing into a pure MBTA zoning proposal development may potentially happen because, as, as you know, and most of us up here know, under 40B, a developer is highly constrained as what his profit can be. And he's also highly constrained in that he has to have some minimum percent, typically 20% of the housing in it as affordable. If he were to file his, his proposals for permits under the MBTA zoning district, he has no constraints as to how much money he can make, that's dictated by the marketplace. He has no constraints as to how much affordable housing he has to provide, he can provide some affordable housing if he wishes to, but he has no financial constraint that says he has to set aside X number of units for affordable housing. So, there is some thought that this developer who owns those two parcels of land that's within this district could well come back and say, I want to do something different. There's strong financial incentive for that by, by adopting this section of the zoning bylaw.
My whole question.
Fast questions, I don't talk a lot. For a second, how many acres are they going to fill in with the wetlands?
None, none, none.
None of the wetlands will be filled to...
None, zero.
Okay. And the other one is, how much are we, how much are we paying to tie into Brockton Sewer for these projects? Are we paying for that, the taxpayers of East Bridgewater?
We're paying the initial capital cost, that initial capital cost will then come back. We are paying the initial capital cost. That capital cost will come back to us with all developers who develop in this area with connection fees. So, we're making the initial investment, it gets paid back when they connect to it.
We getting it all back?
Yes.
Every bit of it?
That's the way the law works. We cannot, we cannot provide taxpayer money for private development. That's clear state law, no exceptions.
At this time, Chair would entertain a motion to close public comment with respect to MBTA communities north zoning.
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Gardner, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Crosby. Further discussion there, none. All in favor of that motion to close public comment, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. So, public comment on that particular matter is closed. Pleasure of the board at this time with respect to the, to the north district and that bylaw.
I think my preference right at this minute would be to move to the second bylaw and handle that proposal, get some feedback on that, and then, and then after those two meetings, hearings are closed, to then revisit the potential recommendations for town meeting.
All right, so at this time, we will, we will continue our discussion to, on, with respect to the north district, to later this evening. And in the meanwhile, we will come, take up the downtown district, so. Public hearing notice, any board of the town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing Monday, September 16th, 2024, 7:45 PM in the Town Office Building, 175 Central Street, large second floor conference room. Purpose of the hearing will be to review a proposed amendment to the zoning bylaws of the town whereby a new section entitled MBTA Community Single and Multifamily Overlay District Downtown, so-called MBTA ODD, would be added. Proposed MBTA ODD would allow for construction of single and multifamily housing and/or mixed-use development as a matter of right in accordance with the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 3A, and the planning board seeks public input relative to this proposal. The full text of the proposed zoning bylaw, together with plans which illustrate the areas which would be included in the MBTA ODD, are available for review with the planning board, uh, Planning Building Department during the hours of 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, Friday, 8:30 AM to 12 PM. And likewise, notice that this matter was published in The Enterprise on Friday, August 30th, and Monday, September 9th. So, as I indicated before, same language, different area, this is a 17.22 acre parcel in the downtown area. Mr. Gardner has pulled up the map and can describe that area for you.
So, so this is an area bounded roughly by the, the, the north, northeast border of Precise Engineering, the, the Brownfield site. It then goes out to the center line of, of Union Street, to the center line of Cook Street, then goes in a, in a, from the, the bend in Cook Street, intersects Spring Street at a 90-degree angle, back to Spring Street, and then back to the beginning out on West Union Street. A significant number of the acreage in this area is in fact the Brownfield site. Where that big building is all the way out to Cook Street is all Brownfield site. It includes a total of 14, I believe it's 14 existing buildings, including several small houses, relatively small houses on the, on the southwesterly side of Spring Street, as well as a couple of larger buildings on the, on the northeasterly side of Spring Street. If I'm not mistaken, the largest building there is, is the Paul Accoffe Dance Center. So, again, what we're proposing here is basically all the same numerical requirements in same language. As was stated here earlier, this proposed zoning bylaw, which, which I believe would enter our zoning bylaw as Section 17, would have all of the same language except the, the difference being the zoning map and the acreage. The acreage, we figured is...
17.22.
17.22 acres. And the intent of this would be hopefully to get multi, multifamily mixed uses with business, office space, small retail use, and, and things like that along the lower floors, with the potential to get the parking requirements to make a true downtown area. The other piece of this is that the expectation would be for this land to be used would require municipal wastewater treatment services. That wastewater treatment service could potentially come from the town's wastewater treatment plant, which is located on the town's property right here behind this building. The discharge permit we have with DEP would allow that municipal wastewater system to be expanded by a factor of as much as six than it, than it currently is. There's currently a single 30,000 gallon unit in that building that's used primarily for town buildings right now, including the high school, middle school building, and the fire department. There's also already connections in place with Carriage Crossing, with the Dewhurst property, and we have the ability to expand that system down to this area, which would be driven by, again, private development money paying to do the expansion needed to get down to this property, which in terms of the amount of feet is not all that far because the main is already in Route 18 up to the intersection of Bedford Street and Spring Street because CVS is already connected to the system. The expectation that an investment in this area could potentially trigger renovation because we'd have to have the sewer line going down Central Street, could finally trigger the renovation of the older buildings on Central Street, which currently legally can have second-floor residential units in them, but none of them can comply with the requirements for the Title V systems that you would need to put residential units in those second floors. So, so a second piece of, of thought as to why this could potentially be a, an improvement for downtown in terms of what's there is that to get that septic line down, the probable route would be down Central Street to the intersection with Union Street and up Union Street to this property. If that line is down Central Street, then potentially all of those businesses on Central Street could connect to it. Then what happens is that area that's in behind all of those Central Street businesses that use the septic system that's out behind there, that septic system could go away. That could become a true municipal parking lot.
Where? Where would the municipal parking lot be?
Behind Happy Frog and those other businesses. Right now, that's all private property. And right now, a substantial portion of that property is constrained because in the back half of that land is where the septic systems are for those buildings. That could all go away and become an expanded parking lot directly behind all of those buildings. That's, right now, one of the other constraints there is that you can't do an awful lot with those, with those buildings from a business standpoint because there's no adequate parking there.
So, again, two things, one would be on the text, Section 17 on, Section B, the reference there should be to only 17.22 acres as opposed to 116.15, incorrectly stated there. And then the other would be the addition of the same language, as I indicated prior, on Section D 3B with respect to accessory uses. Again, at this point, if there are questions or comments from the board, we take those. If not, if you guys have any questions specific to the downtown district, we can entertain those at this point. Yes, ma'am?
John Mashasik, West Union Street. So, the area that you want to develop is 6220 and 6219? Is that correct? That's where you want to put the multifamily housing?
It's everything within those red lines would be within this district.
Yeah, but there's already houses in those red lines. I mean, the area that you want to develop...
So, again, so again, you're saying the area that you want to develop. All this does is it, so with respect to existing, existing properties, right? Existing properties. You own a property along, along Central Street. This gives you an opportunity to do something different with it if you so choose. This gives you the opportunity as Mr. or Mrs. Developer to come in and say, okay, I'll buy these five properties, I'll do something else with it, okay, than what it is today. It's not, we're not building anything, we're not developing anything. It's simp, no, it simply gives, it gives an opportunity for folks to come in and develop housing or different sorts of uses in that area. That's all it does.
As a second thought to complying with the, with the government to, to clean up the Brown, the Brownfields site, and you want to build in there?
That's one piece, that's one piece of where we would like the development to happen.
That's not a very big area in there. When you were talking, you mentioned a lot of acres of land. I've walked back in through there before, the backyard of the people on Spring Street are there, and then the people on Cook Street are on the other side, and then West Union Street. In the middle there, there's some land, but not a lot, and it's very, very wet packed there.
Yes, we're talking...
And that's where you want to build a big business on the bottom, and you suggested apartments at the top.
If you, as a developer, felt that that was in your interest to go in there and do that, it would...
I'm asking a question as a resident who lives there.
Right, and I'm saying to you, there's not, the fact that it is, this rezoning takes place, does not mean anything gets built, okay? All it does is, it gives somebody an opportunity, if they see that opportunity, to go in there to clean up the Brownfields properties or buy the other properties and redevelop them in a different way. It's, it's, there is nothing that says here that if this is adopted, something else will happen. A developer has to come in, somebody has to come in and be willing to work within this zoning to redevelop the property. That's really what it's about.
Well, the other meetings I've gone to have asked us what we thought we would do with that piece of property when it's cleaned up.
Correct, yep.
Because the town owned it.
Yep.
But the town doesn't own the piece of property next to it on Cook Street, does it? Somebody else would have, you would have to buy that from somebody else.
Not we, some developer, some developer would have to buy that from someone else.
And, and the, the town, just so we're clear, assuming that the town ever takes title to the Brownfields sites, okay, we'll call them that, the town is not going to be the one to develop it. It's going to be a private developer. It's all private, private development. It's got nothing to do with the town of East Bridgewater undertaking any sort of development.
I thought we went, I misunderstood, we went to the other meetings, I was under the impression that that was going to be 40B housing, and it was an MBT layover area, and that's what was going to go in there, you were...
It's not, it's not 40, it's not 40B housing.
And then apartments up.
That's, that's one opportunity that this zoning would give a developer who would come in and purchase that land. That simply affords them the opportunity to build in that way. And that, I think, is what the board is suggesting, would be the board's vision for what would make a viable downtown area for East Bridgewater.
So, if that decision was made, then, then you would decide where is all the traffic from this big apartment building going to go?
That would all be part of that whole discussion, that's right. There are certain requirements in here that say that if you're going to put up a building of whatever size, you have to have a certain amount of parking, you know, for, for residential, for business, you know, so on, so forth.
Because that's a corner, and it's a bottleneck, and the traffic's already brutal trying to...
Sure, I mean, all of those, all of those things, you know, are taken into account, but again, that's, that's not part of this. All this is, is, this is just giving somebody...
That's the beginning, so you can...
Somebody, right, and, and if, whether somebody picks up on that and thinks there's a beneficial opportunity there and develops it, who knows?
Well, think, think that through from a traffic standpoint. Well, think, think that through from a traffic standpoint. If a developer comes, if a...
Yep.
If a developer comes in and wants to develop the land, he's going to look at his traffic flow. He's going to buy at least one piece of property on Spring Street and have his primary access and address on Spring Street west of CVS. And what, what's, what's the best way to get to Route 106 from, from Spring Street if you're on west of 106, west of CVS? You'd go out onto Spring Street, go right, go straight down Spring Street onto 106. You don't even go through the center. You would not want to go through the center.
That's the way I go because it's so bad on West Union Street.
Well, why wouldn't you go that way anyway?
But remember, when one, that 147 has all the new trucks coming, they're all going to be pouring onto Spring Street too. And that's if somebody sells that land on Spring Street. My concern was if they go out onto Cook Street, that's going to put a lot of traffic on a small street to access from. Those are the things I've been thinking about.
I don't believe that a developer would consider using Cook Street as his primary access address. That wouldn't make sense.
Roy, just, just very quickly, so the next town meeting, or town meeting would be sometime in October?
October 7th.
When you bring this up. So all I ask is that you provide the, an overhead on the laws, how 3A is written where it pertains to walkable communities, that, you know, this 3A is encouraging, as well as, what else were you talking about? Walkable communities? Oh, mixed use, because I don't see anywhere where it says mixed use.
And single family.
Encouraging single family.
That's in that bylaw that we have.
That's in the bylaw.
That bylaw, listen, please, listen. That bylaw was downloaded directly from the State Department of Communities and Urban Development website as the suggested starting point. That's where it came from.
Under this.
Yes.
Under this proposal, MBTA Communities Act.
Absolutely.
Please provide it.
It's right, go, just go look at the website, it's still there.
You're going to, you...
That's still there at the state website.
I'd like to, I'd like for you guys to have an easy time of promoting this at town meeting. Why don't you just show where it says that? Show where it...
How do I show where it is on the state website?
Well, I mean, it's...
Look it up, please. Let's, let's be reasonable.
Why should I have to look it up?
You're telling me you don't believe it's on the state website, that I have to somehow prove to you?
How I work, how I work is I'm a fact checker.
And go to the state website and fact check it.
It shouldn't happen because you're telling me something, and I think you should be, you should be...
I told you, listen, let's not be absurd here. I told you, I told you where it is.
Why don't you want to...
How do I tell you again at the town meeting where it is?
You're representing us. We're asking you to provide the documents so when people go to this meeting, they will see what you're talking about.
That is the document.
They're not going to have time to go to the website because they're not going to know about it.
Listen to me.
Bring it to the meeting.
That is the document.
It is the document.
That came from the state website.
I got a ninety-year-old dad, he doesn't know how to use a computer. What are you going to do with that?
I just don't know why it's so hard for the planning board to provide a document that states that this is, this is what the zoning district entails and that the...
So is, is, I'm just trying to understand your objection. Your objection is to the fact that there's single family and commercial uses that would be allowed here?
Because I read the law here that says it pertains only to multifamily. That's false. But that's what the law says.
That's not what the law says. What the law says, it allows Department of Housing and Urban Development...
This is a Massachusetts...
Listen to me, please. The law says that it assigns the Department of Housing and Urban Development the sole right to promulgate the rules that allow this bylaw to be implemented. What the state passed is not the state's bylaw. What the state passed is the words that go into the zoning bylaw. The rules promulgated by Department of Housing and Urban Development, which are posted in detail on their website, is what we have to follow.
And do they reference the MBTA Downtown, or MBTA Communities Act?
Yes.
Does that, it mentions that?
It says, this is the rules promulgated under that section of state law.
I'll go through the thousand pages before October 7th, okay? It's in that act.
We're going to post, I told you when we opened this meeting tonight, I'm going to post what was just posted on the state website, I think it was last Friday. A simplified guide for you to look at to get an idea of what the state is looking to do here.
I'm not trying to present a problem here, but if I ask something for somebody to do something...
Well, you just made a statement that eight sentences in the bylaw is what the state wants us to do.
According to this act, 3A. Well, that's what this is.
But that's just eight sentences, there's no detail in that. No detail whatsoever.
If you look at section 3A, right, as adopted, you're not going to find this. This is the guidance that the state has put out, which is what was intended, okay? You've got a, you've got a relatively small size statute. State says, okay, those departments that are responsible at the state level for guidance will put out that guidance. This is where this is coming from.
And I, and I understand all of that, and it's a completely different entity from what the state is, or the MBTA. The Urban Housing and Development is a state, I mean, a federal, federal bill.
The State Department of Housing.
State Housing, T H C.
Okay, so it's a different, it's a different entity than the MBTA.
MBTA has nothing to do with this, nothing.
Well, it does.
Nothing.
We have to...
That's the, nothing. That's the name that the legislature tagged onto the zoning bylaw.
It's certainly misleading.
The state arbitrarily sort of used the MBTA as a way to...
Scrape town over.
...the pipeline or the scope of it. So when I talk about this, I call it 3A. I try not to use MBTA communities because that's sort of...
Makes people upset.
...is misleading a little bit.
The nation's a MBTA.
So there's 177 towns that are required to comply with 3A. They either have commuter rail service, subway service, bus service, ferry service, or are adjacent to one of those communities that do. So that's just how they sort of like picked the...
That's right. So that's exactly how the state identified which communities were going to have to come into compliance, based on MBTA's location and adjacence.
I just think it's a misnomer when, when they put MBTA there and it's something completely different.
Correct.
Ma'am? Yes, in the back.
Hi, Kathleen Lynch, 170 West Union. Thank you. Just wanted to, just to echo my neighbor on West Union Street's sentiment, we understand that this is about a zoning change and not specifically development, but when you consider the factors, the environmental factors of the plot, and calling it brownstones, and some people calling it Eastern State Steel, and some people are calling it something else, so when you say brownstone, you're talking about Eastern State Steel, that lot, correct? Just want to make sure I'm on the same page. Okay.
It's like four different lots.
Okay. So the whole thing is contaminated, and we know that, and we've known that, right? We know. The, I want to know if the board has read the study charged by Kathleen Tean from 1982 to nineteen, or to the year 2000, that does a deep dive on the contaminants on that lot, and if that's even been a consideration or researched as you prepare to present this to the town? I want to know if the board, or, I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, I would request that the board would take a deep dive into that study because there was a lot of resource, money, and effort put into that, and needs to be considered, one, respectfully. I'm sure you were all part of the town at the time when that all happened, so respectfully. But I just want to make sure that, like, we should all read that about that soil and about that land, because yes, we're talking about zoning, but we're talking about opportunity to grow, to build on that site, and that's serious, signi... Speaking as a town person for forty years, who had a relative of my mother who was disabled and unexplainable neurological viruses, not to mention cited countless instances of cancer in that neighborhood, we need to do a deep dive before we start digging. So I would just ask the board, could we research other cities, towns that had EPA Superfund sites that did clean them and then follow-up testing soil? Can we do a deeper dive on that before we consider digging?
We already know what process we have to go through, and the state and federal government have already told us.
But the...
We have to go through a full Superfund regulated system, monitored by both the state and federal government based on the findings that came from the tests that were done twenty-plus years ago.
And then, but that study does reference that there were some cleanup efforts that had taken place. I know that we discussed that contrary to that prior to the meeting, but it does reference prior cleanup efforts. So I just wanted to point that out. Number one, that, that's my big thing, you keep...
It wasn't, it wasn't a true cleanup effort. What they did is they capped areas where they detected serious contamination on the surface.
Okay.
There was no real, that's not real cleanup.
Okay.
They just capped several areas where, where when they were doing that study, they detected contamination right on the surface.
Okay. So then my second question is, and I'm referencing the math that you had up for this zone, so I don't have a dog in the fight, I just did a $55,000 septic, so I'm past that, but I'm in process. So the soil, I know the soil in that is the worst in the town. It's all clay, it doesn't perk, so we're talking about if that lot was to be developed, that would be wastewater that's going to be treated by the system here behind it.
By the municipal system that's here on the, it's actually on the school property.
So that sounds wonderful. We do need to increase the commercial tax base. I am all for that, we need to grow, but we have businesses, longstanding businesses in the downtown who are drowning, who are suffering, who would surely benefit from being able to access. So I just looked at that line that you drew, like, the, probably one of the biggest taxpayers, maybe Blue Stone Bank, Bridgewater Savings, East Bridgewater Savings, whatever you want to call it, like, they would benefit, so would they be able to tie in? Because they're on the other side of that line.
Well, I think I explained that, that the main would almost certainly have to run down Central Street to Union Street.
Yeah, but they're on that, in the middle part, I just didn't know if they'd be able to access it.
Well, they could, they could certainly potentially connect from the other side of Union Street into the back property of the bank.
Could people, could, and I know you've addressed this, but we talked about a lot, residents, could they tie in on Central Street? Because, I mean, I just...
There would, I don't think there'd be any intention to go beyond the Union Street intersection.
But the, you, the map that you drew took you down to Central Street, if I, I mean, almost to Pleasant Street by TJ Smith, right? The map that you showed was a big...
No, it's, it's West Union Street.
But the zone...
No, let me go back to the map.
That was another zone.
You were talking about the opportunity for development on Central, if I remember.
The existing, the existing businesses on Central Street, both sides of Central Street on the, on the...
On the downtown.
Westerly side of Route 18. Would have to run the main down Central Street from Route 18 to West Union Street, which would allow all of those downtown businesses that exist there right now to potentially tie into that system, which would allow all of those businesses potentially to renovate their buildings, all, almost all of which have existing second floors, which have minimal use because they can't do anything with them because of the septic problems in downtown.
Right, right.
It would then go up West Union Street, would also allow those, those buildings on West Union Street, which again have minimal uses because of the septic stuff. The, the building that's, I think, is still referred to as the Ideal Club is one of those. That could connect in, and that, they could also renovate the upper floors of that building to be residential housing.
Capitulations, I know what you're talking about, okay. I just thought it would, it would, I mean, I just did septic, my first quote was six, eighty thousand and ninety thousand respectively, and then I had to do a modern drip irrigation system that cost me 55,000. So I know it's the worst soil in the town, and I'm in the middle of that process, so I'm just thinking about my neighbors, it's too late for me. But this really, you need to consider the residents in that area who have, whose soil doesn't perk and is all clay, how's it going to benefit them, not only the commercial, like, not only the businesses? That's all. That, those are my questions, I...
Well, the thought is, seriously, there will be no single-family residential buildings there when this is all said and done in two decades. It'll be all, be commercial development, multifamilies, maybe small lots, and the developers will have to connect all of them to municipal sewer.
That's a good thing. We need to be able to attract businesses to the downtown to increase the commercial tax base. I am with you for that. I just, let's also take care of the residents who are suffering. I mean, everybody, it's not, everybody knows that part of the town, the soil is the worst.
We know that, there's no question about that.
But what about the residents? What about the residents as well? Like, is there any consideration for them to be able to...
Well, there won't, the thought is that there won't be any single-family residential homes in there that aren't new construction connected to the sewer system.
What about Spring Street to...
Eminent domain.
Well, the, the system's not...
I'm not going anywhere, I just invested in my septic.
The system's going to be big enough to go all the way up Spring Street, I don't believe.
Okay.
And there's not enough residential houses there. There's large, long, open frontage areas there that aren't developed.
Yeah.
Remember, you're talking about the capacity of the existing facility that we have. It all has to, it all has to work within that capacity.
The existing facility?
The existing treatment facility that is in the downtown area.
Right, but you said it has the capacity to service six times.
It could be expanded roughly six times what is currently being used there, that's correct.
So why not let that second of Spring...
All I'm saying is it's constrained by that capacity, whatever that may be.
Sure, but why not also allow this Spring Street...
If, if the residents along Spring Street or whatever other area that could potentially be connected to, to the sewer system want to do that, then the way that's done in communities with wastewater treatment system is those residents petition the selectmen to come up with a plan to do that, and then those residents pay that cost.
Yeah, but $30,000 tie-in is less than a $55,000 septic, why not?
There's no debate about that.
Yeah.
That's, that's 100% correct.
Yes, I've been researching this for like five years, so I just, people need to know how bad that part of the town is, the soil.
But the problem is, until the residents get together and petition the selectmen for that, the selectmen have no way to spend any dimes on that. Because again, that, if you're servicing private property, the town is constrained as to how they would do that.
Okay.
If all of the residents in a certain area came up to the town and said, we want you to expand the system to us, the town could go to its engineer, get a price to do that, and, and give you a proposal back, this is what it would cost, and typically the way that's handled, although I don't think it's the best way, is that those fees are based on frontage on the street.
Yeah, so I wondered if 57 Brands was going to invest in the town a little bit more to help bring some water sewer down that street. That was kind of where I was going.
Okay, sir, you're on.
Quick question, it might sound kind of crazy. So my big problem is, is the state. I don't trust the state for anything. We as a town, I get it, we all have a skin in the game here. Because of it being a Superfund site, they got us, so they're not, so some developer that comes in has to deal with the state, correct? Because they have to get the thing...
And federal, yes.
And federal, because they got to get the thing cleaned up.
Correct.
How much does the state have control of that, to what, what's going to be done? Once we change the zoning law and the state hears that, they can do whatever they want, pretty much. They can take those houses eminent domain if they have to, whatever.
The state can't do that.
But I'm saying, big picture, down the road, those houses along Spring Street say goodbye. If that's going to be developed into what you, we're talking about right now, I would say...
Well, that would, well, I would say that's correct.
Yeah.
Or what would happen is a private developer would have to have to...
It makes you as the owner an offer and...
So I'm a private developer.
Yep.
I want to build there.
You've got deep pockets.
I got to go to the state. The state's going to say, all right, we'll give you grants to do it, but with these stipulations. They're going to mandate, whether that developer is, to do what they're told. That's what's going to happen. Because once, I don't trust the state for anything. I trust, I trust our town to try to do that.
You've got the order.
But once we open the can of worms, the state takes it.
You've got the order incorrect. The way that would be done is the developer puts a proposal together, including exactly what he wants to do, with detailed designs for buildings and, and all that other stuff, and he goes to the state and says, if I do this, will I be eligible for grants? And they'll do the same thing with the federal government. The state's not going to tell him what to do. The state will tell him what to do to clean it up, and the federal government will monitor that and monitor it very tightly, the way they're doing them today, but the developer will make the proposal to the state and federal government first.
So then, once, once we set the zoning to where the developer can do that, we lose any control anymore. Because now, now they're going to go to the state, the state's going to say what they can do, they're going to come back to us and say, this is what we're doing.
Well, the control, the control is in the zoning bylaw.
That's right.
He has to build what's in that zoning bylaw and meet all of the technical requirements within the zoning bylaw. within the zoning bylaw.
Say that again. I missed that. Say that again.
He has to meet all of the technical requirements that are in this zoning bylaw that we're proposing passing. He just can't come up with anything, any size.
Yeah, so we, we still have some autonomy to have out what we want in the town. But, but what I'm hearing constantly is we have to kowtow to the state to change our laws to what they want. So, we're losing our auton...
To some extent, that's correct.
We're losing basically any leverage we have, basically, once we do this.
The, I mean, the state, the state is imposing certain mandates in general. Yeah, that's, that's true. But there is, there is, there is still, I think it's fair to say, there's still either, you know, the, we were talking about before, under the affordable, the accessory dwelling units, and then this. I mean, there's still some elements of local control, yeah.
I want to have as much local control as possible. If we give it all away, then we're...
Appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah. That's why I'm here.
But the way the state zoning bylaw works, since the modern zoning bylaw was adopted in nineteen fifty-five, the state has the highest level of control. They allow us to put the detailed controls at the bottom, basically.
Yeah.
And what they're doing here, for better or for worse, is they're giving us more detailed level controls being forced down on us from state level. And this is the first time they've ever done it to this stage. Now, they've done it twice. Because they did it with the, the MBTA zoning bylaw, or Mass General Law's Zoning Act 3A.
3A.
And they're now doing it with this accessory dwelling unit component of the state zoning bylaw.
So, getting back to my original question, if we bucked the system, what, what do they have hanging over? Is it just the grants, getting money back to the state?
That's, that's at least, I think, Jason, I mean, that's, that's at least, as it stands right now, that seems to be what it is.
Endings on how the Milton case goes upstate or...
Could you join Milton?
And having to spend money defending yourselves on board.
And who knows whether it goes beyond that? I mean, I don't think anybody knows that.
Has anyone looked into a class action situation, maybe hooking up with Milton in, in Mansfield and fighting back?
The Milton case has already been taken up directly by the State Supreme Court.
That's good.
Now, that, there's some important facts that, that are behind that is, is number one, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, since the State Supreme Court was founded, the State Supreme Court has never taken a case that hasn't gone through at least a district court or, or a superior court. Never in the history of Massachusetts have they taken a raw case that's just been filed directly to the State Supreme Court.
It's on the process list.
So, so they're saying very clearly that they want to say something here. Now, no one has any idea what that is. So, so...
The state problem's not good.
We do have a severability paragraph in here that says if, if the State Supreme Court rules, and they've indicated their rule sometime properly in December, if they rule that the MBTA Zoning Act, i.e., forty A, Section 3A, is illegal, then this bylaw goes away. And that's the best we can do, given the current situation and where it stands with the courts. Multiple town councils in multiple communities have already said it doesn't make any sense to get into a class action situation because the state's already said they're going to make a ruling on it through the State Supreme Court. So, I don't think the number of towns involved is going to make an iota of difference. If every single town of the hundred and fifty-six or whatever it is signed up, the Supreme Court still is going to have something to say. And they clearly are going to have something to say, or they never would have done what they did.
Other questions or comments?
I have a question on that. So, what you were saying, Roy, was that that north project on its own wouldn't get us over any thresholds for requirements for whatever, whatever it was, was it the 3A or...
Five twenty or...
Forty-three B.
So, that, that project on its own doesn't get us beyond the thresholds of what we would have to do?
If all of the land was developed, it's twelve-unit buildings on thirty-five thousand square feet, we'd get pretty close. But the reality is, we know that no developer's going to want to do that. Developers are, are going to want to build housing units that best fit the marketplace that they're in.
Plus the constraints of the land itself.
So, the expectation is there'll be probably multiple small, single-family homes, duplexes, quads, uh, who knows what other combinations, maybe sixes and tens. And we also want to try and address what's in the, the guidance from, from Mass Housing that they says they'd want to see this folded into walkable downtowns in each of the communities. Now, some of the communities' walkable downtowns fit fairly good because there's a train station in the downtown. So, it makes perfect sense to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, Mansfield is one of those towns. If, if anyone is familiar with downtown Mansfield in the last thirteen to fourteen years, you won't even know where you are when you drive into downtown Mansfield now. But that's, that's the kind of development that actually was used as the basis by the state for developing this bylaw, according to the seminar I went to.
Okay, if I don't see any other questions, Chair would entertain at this time a motion to close the public comment section with regard to the MBTA Downtown District.
So moved. Second?
Made by Ms., Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Gardner. Discussion, none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Say aye and opposed. Okay, that motion carries. Public comment on that is, is closed at this time. Chair would, would ask for the pleasure of the board with respect to Section sixteen and seventeen, both of the bylaw amend, proposed by law amendments.
I, I would make a recommendation that, that we propose that town meeting adopt, with Planning Board support, Section sixteen, which is the MBTA Communities North District, with the changes, with the several changes that we discussed earlier tonight.
Motion is made with respect to the MBTA Communities North, that is, the seven-thirty public hearing, that the board issue a recommendation of support for adoption of this at-town meeting. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Mrs. Phillips. Further discussion from the board?
And our recommendation should include that it's, it's the opinion of the Planning Board that, that adopting this bylaw as proposed would further the goals of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty A, Section 3A, in that it would provide affordable housing on, on smaller lots, potentially significant amounts of, of multifamily housing buildings, and add a walkability feature to each of these relatively large developments, and would include potential use for mixed-use developments on the first floor of these buildings, again, in, in, following the, the guidance created by Massachusetts Housing that's been passed out to the, to the area towns.
So, the motion is, again, to recommend adoption with respect to the MBTA Communities North proposal for the overlay district in the one-hundred-and-sixteen-point-fifteen-acre parcel that has been identified by MAP and Parcel, and again, to make that recommendation based on the fact that the board believes it to be consistent with the purposes as outlined in Section A of the proposed bylaw. Further discussion on that motion? All those in, yep?
I just think that the risk outweighs the potential reward at the current time. And to me, I think there's been some healthy discussion out in the crowd tonight, too. Giving the state any more power or leeway, I just have a problem with it. So, I'm against both of these tonight.
Further discussion? Comments from the board? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion to recommend adoption with respect to MBTA Communities North Overlay District bylaw, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
So, that's a vote of five to two. Mr. Crosby and Mr. Heager in the minority on that. And with respect to the Downtown District, Mr. Gardner?
So, I'll make a motion that we recommend a town meeting adopt the Downtown District in compliance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty A, Section 3A. And I would propose, basically using the exact same language in that recommendation to town meeting, and additionally include that it's the opinion of the Planning Board that by adopting this bylaw, it would potentially further the opportunity for, for potential, both state and federal grants, to clean up the Brownfield site, which is a substantial portion of this, this site, and is the primary area that's undeveloped at this time.
Motion is made with respect to the Section seventeen, the so-called MBTA Communities Downtown Overlay District, to recommend adoption to the town meeting. That is based on the determination by the board that this zoning provides for opportunities consistent with the goals as set out in Section A, and also would benefit potential opportunities for grants for cleanup of the Brownfields areas that are a portion of this seventeen-point-two-two acre area that is defined by MAP and LOT. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Tedesco. Further discussion on the motion? Hearing, none. All those in favor of the motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Again, five to two vote, Mr. Crosby and Mr. Heager in the minority. Chair would rec, entertain a motion to close the public hearing with respect to the Downtown, excuse me, with respect to the MBTA North District.
Very did that. Well, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Motion is made to close the public hearing on the MBTA Community North District. Second to that motion?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. With respect to the MBTA Communities Downtown District, same motion.
So moved.
Mr. Gardner makes the motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Phillips. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Both matters are closed. Votes of the board are recorded.